Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 3rd, 2025 Lackawanna City Council Meeting Caucus. Again, the caucus is used by the city council as a mechanism within which we amongst ourselves are able to discuss in an open forum the various agenda items. After that, the meeting will, the formal council meeting will be called to order, at which point in time the voting will occur. And anyone present, I would caution and remind you that the meetings are being recorded. All right, and to that end, referring to the agenda for today's meeting, items one through five are all administrative. Communications from City Council, we have two from fourth ward council member Kevin Surdey. Items number six and seven. Kevin, you want to talk about those a little bit?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a few things about like how would we, this is on, how would we move forward to proceed to referendums? Do we have to get signatures? Or do we just have to do something legally as far as?
Sure. So first, I would like to address item number seven about hiring outside council, and then I'll talk about referendum.
Yeah, we could put them both together, sure.
Yeah. Hiring outside council, the city council has that right to do, no matter what. And it's pretty simple. You make a motion, and you just have to have a majority of the council in order to approve. And when you make your motion, you're saying, "City Council would like to retain independent council for the following reason." That's it. And if it's privileged, you can have an executive session, and somebody could take a vote, or you state the reason why you're retaining outside council. That is, so that addresses number seven, unless there are any questions. Great. So number six, I could probably talk for about an hour based on the research that I did, but there are two types of referendums. There are a number of type of referendums, but in particular, to change the charter or to change certain local laws, there are generally two types: a permissive referendum or a mandatory referendum. And mandatory referendum and permissive referendums are both dictated by the municipal home rule sections 23 and 24. So you go and you look down a list of items in which you could have a referendum, and NICOM has a cheat, a cheat treatise, where instead of going through the dry law, you could just call NICOM, ask for the treatise, and it's about a 10 to 15-page treatise on ordinances, resolutions, local laws, and referenda. So in order to do a referendum, basically, you have to do the procedure of a local law and then some extra steps. So the procedure of the local law is, there are, you know, what the local law is, it has to have a title, it has to have a purpose, then it has to have the body of the law, it has to have certain words like "being enacted," whatever. It has to be published, there has to be a public hearing. Just give me a second. And the, in order to have a referendum, it has to fall within the topics that are mandated under municipal home rule sections 23 or 24. You can't just say, "Hey, let's have a referendum on a certain law topic." So it's my understanding, based on the inquiry and the timing, the referendum that you may be looking into is either to look into a potential increase in a salary of an office or of an elective officer of the city, or you're looking at the decrease of the salary of that individual. And my ultimate opinion on both of, or of the referendum is that I believe the city council should seek outside council to get their opinion, but procedurally, there are about 10 different steps that you have to do in order to get something on the ballot. Then it goes on the ballot, and then one of two things happens. The electorate, which is your taxpayers that are registered to vote, they either vote for it or against it. If they vote for it, then the, it becomes local law, and you're amending the charter or making law in relation to what you sought out to seek. If they're not for it, there's no law, and the process has to start over. Do you have any questions for me up until right now on what I said, or?
No, I, I looked all this up, the home rule 2324, and today on the dls.dork.gov website. So I can hear you right off.
Thank you. But there's a lot more, so I'm right on in that little summary.
Right.
But on the other hand, you know, again, I can't encourage the council enough to seek the opinion of outside council on something that it may not agree with me on, as you all know.
I don't agree with you.
Yep. And as you all know, I wrote a memo.
Yeah.
And it was to you, and if you don't agree with it, you, you do what you need to do.
Yes, my next question is, how in 1996 did that city council just change the charter by just an ordinance? To me, that, that doesn't fly. I don't think they did it right.
So that's a great and very astute question. That's an issue, right?
Yeah.
And that, again, has to be further explored of, did they actually do it right? And if they didn't, if they didn't do it right, does that invalidate the actual provision that we're talking about, which is an ordinance, it's not part of the charter, it's an actual ordinance, so it's part of the code? So if they did it incorrectly, then that in and of itself may not apply. I didn't look into that aspect as of tonight, only I looked into it to a little bit, but I did thoroughly research that, and again...
I mean, us as a city council, we can't take the charter and just say, "Oh, we want to change that, get three votes, change the charter." We can't do that.
Correct. The other issue is, you know, is it up to this body to go back and revisit all the laws and all the amendments to the charter that have been made over the past 40 years?
Oh, it's affecting taxpayers, aren't they? Yep.
I think if it comes up, but what I'm saying is, how many other laws or amendments to the charter were not passed procedurally?
Can I speak to that, though?
Yep.
I don't think it's physically possible for any sitting council to undertake that, that kind of undertaking, so to speak. It's not reasonable, it's not practical, and I don't think it's necessary. What's given rise to this occasion today is really two things. One, what happens when one elected official's salary is tied in and anchored to a non-elected official's salary in City Hall? It, in my opinion, it's, it takes and usurps the council's ability to exercise its function as a governing body by not being allowed to pass a budgetary line that addresses that particular salary. Now, that's question number one. There are several other questions that arise as a result of this. Is it just the ordinance that speaks to tying a particular salary into a non-elected official's salary? Or is it the charter that speaks to that? So there's some confusion on this sitting board as, and I know you and I have talked about that, John. There's still some confusion on the board as to whether the charter speaks to that or whether it was this ordinance that, in my opinion, was illegally passed and should not have been passed and does need to be addressed. However, if it goes beyond that to a provision in the city charter, then of course, we need an opinion as to whether or not a referendum will be needed, and I think it's needed to change the charter if that provision, in our opinion, doesn't seem to be fair and reasonable. If it's just the ordinance that was passed erroneously, illegally, or whatever the case may be, then we, as a governing body, may be able to rescind that ordinance, set that rule straight. But there's another issue, there's a third issue, and that is, that when, when, when there is a budget and a raise given to the city council members, there's a provision in the charter that says the city council members are not allowed to receive that, that increase until a next elected term. And there is belief on members of the council that that also affects the mayor's situation, and that even though there, there may be another provision that ties a salary to the mayor's salary, that that doesn't take effect until the following term. So all of these questions are surrounding this issue that has finally come up, and it's not personalities or anything like that, but I think it's incumbent upon this body to clear this up for the city for future administrations, whether it's required by a referendum or whether it's required by local law to rescind that ordinance. That was the problem in the first place, but let's get some clarification. And we can do that by getting outside council, getting an opinion, seeing where that goes, and that's what I think would give us some direction. One, do we need to rescind an ordinance? Two, how does a, a body get a raise? And when does the body get a raise? And three, is, is, does the charter need to be amended by referendum? Or does the ordinance just have to be rescinded? So those are the things that are going through my mind. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
May I just add one more thing? I think we previously discussed the aspect of past practice. You mean, even if, and then even if a body makes a law that is invalidated or really not a law because they procedurally did it wrong, and then the government follows that illegally passed law for 30 years, what do you do there? So I, all of these are issues that need clarification, and I'll just stop at that.
Can I add one more thing? I wasn't insinuating that we, as a council, were going to go through the whole charter to do that. That was just a point of my argument. Yeah, we'll get that. Another thing I'd like to raise is, we've been fighting a battle, let's stump that, been dumped on us for years, development everywhere. We're trying to do things right.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree with the council member survey. It's an opportunity for the council to address this issue, as I said earlier, for future administrations to not have to deal with this. And there are other aspects of this that I, we can get into, but I think we'd have to go into the executive session. I don't want to do that unless somebody else wants to do that. Was that rate given back in 96 to when this was passed? I can't answer that. Meaning, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know what the circuit branch would give, so that wouldn't be past practice. Well, that raises a question. It could amount to past practice, but if the past practice rests on, on an illegal action, I don't think it can be carried forward personally, all right? As a legal argument, but that is an issue to consider.
And that ordinance, what if the $100 more than the comptroller actually decreased the mayor's salary at the time? That can't be done via the charter either. So no matter what happened, it goes back to the actual questionable ordinance and whether it was passed legally.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, I'm done.
I thought you were getting at the end. There was a past practice, too, where one mayor, when the comptroller's pay finally got above the mayor's pay, but his body department ruled that he wasn't available, the mayor wasn't getting the raise until his second term. So there was a past practice there also.
A little more reason to try to get into what's right here.
Sure.
I think. Any other questions for me about item six and seven?
No, so just, and would we be allowed to do that motion today? Or do we have to waive the rules?
I was going to suggest, since it's germane to the topic that council member survey brought up for the agenda, I think a forthcoming motion addressing whether outside council should be hired flows from that agenda item and would be entertainable without waiving of the rules. What is your opinion?
My, my opinion is, it's your meeting, and you can run that, and you don't need to waive the rules. That's, that's fine.
So I, I think you would be within your rights if you wanted to make a motion for outside council, and then we just have to vote on it.
Okay. And actually, just for clarification, I presume the council will pick outside councils? Or do you want the city attorney to help you? I, I mean, I don't even know. I haven't done this.
No, I've already spoken to a few people, yeah.
Okay.
I was in touch with the council over the weekend, and we spoke a little bit, but not that I'm trying to overstep my bounds, but I'm just trying to get ahead a little bit.
If necessary, we'll call on you for your, your opinion.
Sure.
As always.
I would choose me. At a billable rate of about $600 per hour.
Then you wouldn't get the job.
That would be a conflict, as everybody knows. I am joking.
Yeah, of course.
Should we come up with that motion now, so that when you have, you know what I mean? So that when we get there, Grace, you have it all written down?
Do you want to, do you want to make your move? You want to give your word?
Always.
We'll wait, all right. Grace was out of town. She's well rested. She can write quick.
Yeah.
All right. Communications from Division Department Heads. Item number eight, senior foreign public works request city council through ordinance transferring funds. Rupture stated lighting project funds will be reimbursed through county urban initiative grant invoices were attached. Dan, anything you want to add on that?
Um, yeah, the only thing, I just wanted to say that I'm submitting this to the council on behalf of the Recreation Department. We know the city's in the process of hiring a recreation director, so I'm kind of just overseeing this project until, until that position is filled. Invoices are due and for to, excuse me, yep, to Musco for the lighting project. As we know, they took down the old lights, put up the new lights, and soon as the weather breaks, they'll be coming back to finish.
Any council members have any comments or questions on item number eight?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, Dan, do we have any spare parts, any spare lights or anything?
No.
Would that be something that we should have, do you think, or no?
I mean, they're...
I don't know. They're supposed to last a long time.
Yeah, they last, they're LED, yeah, they last a very long time.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the streetlights, blinking on and off.
I mean, that's something to could definitely look into, for sure. Yeah.
All right. I was just wondering if we had any spare?
No, we don't.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, number nine, senior foreign public works request city council through ordinance transferring funds for the balance of Warsaw Street Bridge replacement project. Dan, anything you want to add on that?
Uh, yeah, New York State awarded the city of Lackawanna through New York Bridge Grant of three, yeah, they awarded Lackawanna $3,659,474. With this, with this grant, the city is required to provide a 5% match. That equals to $192,604. The new bridge will be 90 feet long, 53 feet wide. The beginning and the end abutments will be removed to actually to realign the creek, and also the elevation will be higher, so it meets the FEMA flood plan specs. So that's, that's another aspect of this bridge replacement. We have to be in accordance with FEMA's flood plans.
Oh, good news.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments on item nine? Moving on to item number 10, again, from senior foreign public works, request city council through CPL Clark Patterson Leefer Engineering/Design for Warsaw Bridge Replacement Project. CPL was the only firm that responded to the RFP. Dan, anything else on that?
Um, no, basically, we sent out the request for proposal for the Warsaw, for the Warsaw Street Bridge replacement. We mailed them to all the engineering firms listed on the New York State County Highway Superintendents Association website. We mailed them all out, and we also had it published in Buffalo Business First. CPL was the only proposal that the city received back. And may I add that they are familiar with this project because they worked with the city's grant writer to actually do the application for this grant.
Yeah. Any council members have any comments on item 10?
Yeah, when will the project start?
So the timeline, well, the timeline for this project, it's, it's basically, it's a pretty lengthy timeline. If the council approves CPL, they get started on the design phase, I would say, probably within the next month. But there's lots of paperwork, there's a whole process to go through with New York State and with the federal government because of FEMA. We're looking at preliminary, preliminary design could take six to 12 months, then design approval through New York State DOT can take one to three months, then environmental assessment review, that's three to 12 months, then the detailed design is six to 12 months. Then once all that's done, you can start bidding the job out for the contractors, then you award the job, that could take one to three months, and then construction and demolition total anywhere between 12 to 24 months. So actual construction won't start till 2027.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Now moving on to item number 11, city attorney, request city council approve ordinance regarding the flow of traffic on Nason Parkway. Instead of west to east, it would be east to west, correct?
Correct. And it's my understanding that is being done in order to be an outlet for traffic on South Park Avenue during construction by Erie County all along South Park. And who may have comments to share is the Director of Public Safety and/or the DPW's foreman.
So Erie County is doing a sewer project that's going to close South Park from McKinley, it's going to be closed from McKinley Parkway to Ridge Road. And if you want to pass it out, this is all the detour route, that's the complete detour route if the council wants to look at it. Project's supposed to start end of March, beginning of April, should last one to two months, and so that's what's going on with there, the replacing the sewers laterals.
Thank you. And Dino, anything on your end?
Did I discuss it with Chief Packard and Captain Kukaleka? Just like Chief Attorney said, it's going to help alleviate the traffic coming up South Park to try to get around Ridge Road. So that, right now, that's the plan to do that, keep it one way and go from there as far as how that congestion works.
Very good. Any council members have any questions or comments?
Is there a chance, a chance of reversing that after the project is over, back the original way?
Well, the original way, if I may add, was a two-way street. But is there a chance for two-way? I highly doubt it because there's not enough room. Is there a chance to go west to east again? There's always a chance for, I would say, either direction, but it really, it'll be based on, it's my understanding, it'll be based on what occurs during construction, and if it looks as though it's a better outlet for traffic from South Park to Electric, then it may not go back to west-east.
On the corner of Electric and Ridge Road, though, there's a school there, there's school buses there. You go by there at 8:30 in the morning, you ain't getting down Electric Avenue.
Meaning, from north to south? I think you are. If with the westerly, with the traffic going from South Park to Electric, you're avoiding those buses because they're not on the side of where the old LCDC is.
I see them pulling in there all the time in that back parking lot.
But the flow's going the other way, right?
Right. No, it's going down Electric to...
Towards Nason Park.
But there is, I mean, the, the lights are on, flashing red lights, you can't, you can't get through there in the morning.
Well, you're saying it's a problem for the buses?
Well, it's probably, if, if you're behind, behind a bus, you wouldn't get down that street.
Well, if, if it's changed to the other way, you're not going down that street in that direction anyway.
That's true.
The question then becomes, if the buses have to come through South Park, both Nason Parkway then go up Electric to access to the back of that school to drop the kids?
Well, there isn't a round behind the, behind the school.
Yeah.
I just see, see a lot of traffic during the morning, that's all.
Yeah.
Does anyone know what precipitated the actual change from two-way to the direction that it's in, that it's in now?
My recollection, there were a number of people who lived or had property on Nason Parkway. I think the police department complained that, that there was significant damage done to vehicles because of parking and two-way traffic, people speeding, trying to get, beat the traffic through there. And also, I think there was a request from Buffalo or something when, when, when the, the park was, the, the park area was installed next to City Hall here, and, and the excess steps leading down to Nason Parkway in the back here, and that whole area was, was redone. There was a request that whatever could be done to have it more like a park setting by controlling traffic was, was the discussion of the day, if I recall correctly.
And there hasn't been a study done for that or since, is that correct?
I don't know if there was a formal study done or if the engineers came through with an opinion. I, I don't remember.
Because this direction would be more ideal, not just for the sewer replacement that the, that's going to be in the spring, but just anyone who's ever driven down South Park entering.
I would agree with you.
So I think this is the logical steps to take, and I was just curious if, if and when the two-way traffic became problematic and what the issues were at the time, because that was pre my term, so I wasn't part of that decision-making, but this does seem very logical, especially with the anticipation of the project that would just completely be debilitating to that whole area, so.
Yeah. Well, we may have to get into that topic again. I'm sure. Okay, anyone else on that item? Moving on to communication with Citizens Waitern, senior president using power program by city council, close Odell Street between Inham and Swarthouth June 18th? No. For the 18th Annual Taste of Lackawanna, Saturday, June 7th, at 9, it's at 9:00 AM and runs until 8:00 PM. So a very well-attended program run every year. Wade Turner is a great pillar in this community, not only for our kids, but for this particular program, and I think we could, should continue to support him. Anyone else have any comments or questions on item number 12? Moving on to item number 13, Rayanne Rizro, Lackawanna Board of Education, request city council approve use of Lackawanna Senior Senate Budget Board School Board Budget Election May 20th, 11 to 9, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Anyone have any comments on that? Not business registration, community service for everyone, Lindsay Goodenout, 1337 Abbott Road, D, rehabilitation program for people with intellectual disabilities. Anyone have any comments? Appropriate paperwork was submitted by our city officials, all on approving. If not, then I'm formally calling the order of our meeting for March 3rd, 2025. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, and that's City Clerk Colwell, please.
Flotny, President Anderson, all ready?
Here.
Surdey?
Present.
Morano?
Here.
Law Department?
Here.
Development and Marketing?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Comptroller's Office?
Here.
Recreation is absent. Any here in the conference?
None.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of... Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 18th, 2025.
Morano moves to adopt minutes of regular meeting, February 18th, 2025. Is it?
McLaughlin seconds. Motion by Morano, second by McLaughlin, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of February 18th, 2025, is written. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Morano moves to receive file. Departmental reports one through five.
McLaughlin seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by McLaughlin, to receive and file departmental reports one through five. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. Councilmember Sirdick requests the city council and law department have a discussion regarding how to proceed to referendum.
Morano moves to receive a file. Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdick, to receive and file. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Carry five zero. Councilmember Sirdick, receive, request the city council have a discussion regarding the possible need for the city council to retain its own council.
Morano moves to receive a file and I make a motion that city council retain outside legal counsel for an opinion addressing the concerns and conflicts that apparently have arisen over time between the city charter and past local laws addressing the setting and changing of the mayor's annual salary. Anyone else have anything to add to that? Or does that cover everything?
And changing ordinances through the charter? The ordinance that was.
And, and ask, ask local laws is what I said.
Within the charter or just?
I said the charter and ask local laws. Right?
Yes.
Sounds good. I'd love to second that. We need a second receiver file and a second on the motion. A second vote.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdick, to receive and file. Motion by Morano, second by Sirdick, to retain, for the city council to retain outside counsel.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel. For opinion addressing the concern and conflicts that have arisen over time regarding the city charter and past local laws of the setting and changing of the mayor's annual salary. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Moretti.
No.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano. Motion by Morano, second by Sirdick, to make motions regarding city council retaining outside legal counsel for opinion addressing concerns and conflicts arisen over time regarding the city charter and past the local laws of the setting and changing of mayor's annual salary. And it is carried three to two. Senior Foreman of Public Works requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring funds for the Veterans Stadium Lighting Project. The funds will be reimbursed through the Erie County Urban Initiative Grant. The voice is attached.
Morano moves to receive file act on ordinance.
McLaughlin seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by McLaughlin, to receive and file act on ordinance. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. An ordinance amending the 2024-2025 budget ordinance to add budget code Veterans Stadium Rehabilitation Lighting to the capital fund and transferring $467,567.40 to this budget code for the capital fund inter-fund transfers.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance is written. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. Senior Foreman of Public Works requests the city council approve the ordinance transferring funds for the balance of the Warsaw Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Morano moves to receive file act on ordinance.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. An ordinance amending the 2024-2025 budget ordinances to add budget code Warsaw Street Bridge Repair to the capital fund and transferring $109,604 to the Warsaw Bridge Repair Budget Code from capital fund into fund transfer.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance is written.
Anderson.
Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance is written. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. Senior Foreman of Public Works requests the city council approve CPL Clark Patterson Lee for the engineering design firm for the Warsaw Street Bridge Replacement Project. CPL was the only firm that responded to the RFP.
Morano moves to approve request. Anderson second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero. City Attorney requests the city council approve the ordinance regarding the flow of traffic on Mason Parkway.
Morano moves to receive a file act on ordinance.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file act on ordinance. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carry five zero.